And then this is now kind of like.
Alright, everybody. Um, I could have your attention. The time is uh 4:30. And I would like to call the June twenty-third regular meeting of the Grand County Planning Commission to order. Got a pretty crowded room, so I think we'll all be able to get through this pretty quick. So stay orderly. Um, everybody takes a turn. So first off, we have a section called Citizens to be Heard. I want the crowd to know there is also a public hearing happening later in the meeting regarding the NOVAC rezone. So if you are here to leave a comment about that public hearing, you can withhold that comment during the Citizens to be Heard. You'll get a chance during that public hearing for those comments to be read into the record. But if there's anybody else in the room or online who has a citizens comment not related to the NOVAC rezone, um, we can have you come up, read your name into the record, sit next to Stephen here. And uh, we'll have three minutes for those comments. If uh, anybody's here not for NOVAC? Online? Alrighty, well, we've got a couple of things to do before we get to that public hearing, but we'll try to be as expedient and as respectful as possible. Being that there are no citizens to be heard, we'll go around the room for planning commissioners and staff to disclose any ex parte communications. Uh, I have none this week. Anybody else talking about?
I went over.
Yes.
Always.
Chrissy's on.
We just generally talk that.
That's a much better thing to talk about than planning and zoning. Let me play it.
Oh, there's those things.
Alrighty, um, we also, um, there just wasn't enough time in the week. We don't have the last meeting's minutes ready for approval this week. We'll just get two of them done at the uh, next meeting. What is that? On the July fourteenth meeting, so we'll just skip that for this one. Um, we have the planning staff report, and I also have two other things, just in general staff report stuff. I'll go from Chrissy, and then we have a little update, uh, training from Stephen on OPLA, the Open and Public Meetings Act. And Erin would like to give us some updates from the Grand County Housing Task Force. So Chrissy, take it away.
Um, I'd like to introduce Stephen to talk about.
Outstanding.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for being here. And you can let us know real quick, so.
Sure. So if you're ever really excited or bored and wanna learn about the open and public, uh, open and public rules for the state, um, it's Utah Code Section fifty-two dash four dash one oh one, and that goes all the way through. And one of the fun parts about it, if it can have a fun part, is the reason why it exists is for government to be conducted in the sunshine, is what they say, to be open, transparent, so that people can come, just like today, and be able to be heard, see government working. That's why uh, the meetings are held with forums, they're held live. And one of the most critical parts about it is the deliberation. The deliberation, as you just heard, we have ex parte communication. We do a disclosure. So that we're all on the same playing field about the information that they're going to talk about today. Another critical part about that is the discussion should be what's in this room. We shouldn't be texting, we shouldn't be emailing or communicating with outside people because you all are here to be able to talk about this item, to consider this item, to consider the ideas that you have. And if somebody else is participating in that conversation, that makes it hard because that's not open, and that's not transparent, and that's not part of this process. So it's really critical, um, and the state legislature put it out there that they want government to take actions openly and to conduct their deliberations openly. So just a reminder about that. Um, additionally, when we talk about the items that we're talking about, we limit what we talk about with people before the items. Um, that's that ex parte communication. Again, the reason why we do that is to make sure everything's done fairly, so that you know that you can attend this hearing and hear what all the folks have made the decision about it heard. So that everybody's in the same spot, so that nobody has to think that there was something else that was said that convinced somebody. Now, each individual brings their background, their experience, their time here that they've served on this board, their, uh, you know, general sense of what has happened in this community. Uh, but then the applications, the different items that they consider are done so in an open, transparent way. So I just wanna highlight that if you guys ever have questions about OPLA, you can reach out to me, um, you can let Chrissy know. We can set up a fuller training. We're gonna be highlighting some of those things this year. Um, if there's any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, we need to make sure that the deliberations are open and limited to, to who's here in this room. Uh, and even amongst each other, sometimes there's the desire to like, oh, let me send you a link or something real quick. We want anything that's deliberate and discussed on, there should be a copy of that in the record, so that we have that. Any, any questions about that?
Thank you very much.
Of course, I appreciate your time, my general.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to say, you've got a bajillion things to do.
I'll sneak out here in a second. My general rule of thumb is that if the owl isn't recording me, I'm not talking about it. Just keeps it nice and simple, the owl's in charge. Super. Um, and then Erin, we've got some updates from the Housing Task Force. So thank you for that.
Yeah, the Mayor Committee Housing Task Force has a survey right now on the, uh, in the state of housing in Moab. Suggest everybody, uh, I'm gonna send a, an email to, oh, planning staff. Uh, it's really important that we get a good sample size from variety of people that live in the valley to understand what's going on in our county. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, like a Royal Crossing, just over in the skyline apartments. There's a lot of housing coming online. And so that kinda goes into our, we're going to take that data and present it in a, like, kind of a big meeting that we are asking all county commissioners, planning and zoning people uh, on the city and the county to attend. Because I think, I think we've hit a different generation of housing concerns in Moab. I mean, I just was with my apprentice at the Southeast Housing Authority. They're still wait lists, but like, it's different, and housing's become available, but at different levels. I kinda wanna see what we need to do next. Uh, I think this is really important for our county, and I really lean heavily on, you know, especially commission members and stuff to go on that. So that's what's going on. I'll be sending an email. That'll be July thirtieth for that big, yeah, we were trying to make it like a public meeting, but.
I don't.
It'll be fun.
On process, would you um, send that email to Chrissy so she can distribute it to her mission? Thank you. Um, and likewise, I took that housing survey online already, and I thought the questions were very poignant and well constructed and really got to some pretty interesting issues and statistics, so I'm excited to see that meeting on the thirtieth. Um, alright, those are staff reports, uh, county.
And yeah, this will be really quick. Um, from the last county commission, we had the public hearing for the Land Use Code Amendment four point seven, HDHO. There were seven people that spoke, uh, very articulately, and, and so that we will make that decision next Tuesday as to those amendments. And again, I really appreciate your, your deliberation. And I will be sending those meetings to the commissioners. I've already told them it's a couple of that, well, I think it's four hours in total of deliberation, so hopefully they'll take the time to watch it. Is that correct? I think it was four hours. And the approval of Schumahkoda, is that how you say that?
Yeah.
For independent contractor, contract services for, um, the building inspector in that past unanimously. And then the Echo Canyon Preliminary Municipality, also known as King Creek. We did elect a board member for that preliminary municipality, and that was Melanie McCandless in that past unanimously. And then, that's about all. Anything else you can think of?
I mean, pickleball courts.
Oh, pickleball courts.
Isn't that a city problem that we made at state?
No, it's county problem. Um, so a lot of public, a lot of public input for that. And it was awesome to have the pickleballers, because they're quite, like, happy and clapping. It was really bizarre. It was like they're clapping for everything.
One of my employees is a pickleballer. He lets me know about it even when I don't have.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we're gonna be making some of those final, we have a budget workshop prior to the next commission meeting. We'll be making some final decisions on the pickleball courts, for example, so.
Well, folks, um, that's everything from our regular business. Um, the time is four forty-three, and I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the NOVAC rezone from rural residential to small lot residential. I'm gonna turn it over to the planning administrator, Chrissy, um, just to get us started. And then we'll begin hearing, um, public comments, um, regarding specifically that hearing. Couple of ground rules because there's a lot of people in the room, there's stuff we need. Um, please come up and have a seat, um, here next to Jerry. And then we need you to read your name into the record. Hello, my name is Tony Manu. So, um, and I'm also, because of the sheer volumes of people that I suspect are here to comment on that, we've got a full room and a pretty full online presence. Um, I'm gonna ask that people limit their comments to three minutes. I've got my watch here. And if you come up on two minutes and thirty seconds, I'll give you a little warning to watch your time. We just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. So while you're waiting, if you have some ideas about what is most important, maybe keep those at the top of your mind. Um, Chrissy, would you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the applicant's representative is here as well. I don't know if you saw her. Um, so I'm gonna just give you a general overview real quick. This is a general rezone of forty-five seventy-seven Chapman Lane from rural, rural residential to small lot residential. Um, possible motion is in there, or you guys? It's a thirty point two seven acres of property. This area is currently, it's vacant. Um, it was created as a lot in, I would say, fifty seventy-seven. Um, there's been a small portion that's been taken off, but other than that, it's remained vacant. It is surrounded by rural residential areas. Um, there's one PUD to the north, and then another PUD that's slightly, that's like a parcel over, that does have some smaller properties associated with it. As far as county staff recommendation, prior recommendation was, um, to approve this. This, um, this area was incorporated into the future land use map as an area that would be recommended for some more density. Um, with that, this compact neighborhood, as it's called out in the future land use, um, plan, does not have the, um, in the current land use code, it doesn't have the associated, um, you know, what exactly it would do, what exactly it would be. The closest that it is, is small lot residential according to our current land use code. Um, so this future land use plan is what is going to be used to guide what the land use code and the future zoning map will look like when we, when we adopt that. Keep in mind that when this future land use map was adopted, it did go through a lot of public process. Um, this was something that was decided on by this, the planning commission and the county commission. Um, but it was looked at as a very, um, like thirty thousand foot view. Um, it was, broad strokes were used when, when creating this map. So large swaths of land were called compact neighborhood, moderate scale neighborhood, whatever they were. And then during the land use code and zoning map process, you know, you look at it more closely, in a more surgical um, kind of way where you just, you know, just designate areas, um, based off of, you know, more character, more public engagement in a very specific way. Um, I think I've hit all my high points. Um, I would like to just make sure that you all have looked at what compact neighborhood says, um, within the land use element of the general plan, that there is a section on how to address rezoning requests. And I encourage you guys to discuss that with, um, our. And applicant, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I, I should say a few things. We've got a packed house. Take the easy way out. I like how the King Creek was okay, but we avoided the controversial subject pickleball, so I don't.
I know.
Um, I know that, so, you know, just from the applicant, the owner, Brennan NOVAC, who's, um, a local, uh, woman. She's from Moab, and her sister, she's a successful author. She came forward to the county over two years ago and wanted to develop, uh, this property to do a subdivision that's intended for kind of mid-level, uh, uh, housing for the community. And, um, the process has been tough, to be honest. Um, like I said, it's been over two years. We've been through multiple planners. Um, we were, you know, first, uh, you know, kind of proposed to engage with the HDHO. That was put on the table. It's been a moving target. So we engaged with the future land use plan. Um, see this area as obviously a high-growth area along the Spanish Valley corridor. Understand the concerns, you know, from folks that have enjoyed a lower density in Spanish Valley and are hesitant to see that change. But this is where the rubber meets the road. People need houses, and we need parcels to develop on, and so that's what this is. And, um, you know, I think we, we initially, uh, sought a higher density, agreed to scale back to SLR with a PUD. So I feel like, you know, uh, between myself and the applicant, we've been as reasonable and patient as we can. Um, understand folks that, you know, on property adjacent to the lot, um, you know, are hesitant to see that, that change. You know, I get that, um, you know. If you're on an acre lot, a half acre lot, everyone enjoys the views over an empty field, and they don't want that to, want that to change. Um, but the folks that own the property, they would like to, um, see this, see this developed and to deliver some utility for the community and some housing for people. The focus of the development, the site plan, I feel like is a very sophisticated site plan that is intended for that, uh, use type, which is, uh, single-family residential, that's intended to be, you know, kind of more mid-level. Um, the applicant has engaged a, a really great architect out of Washington DC that's really impressive, and it's a very thoughtful development. So I think I can understand, you know, hesitation, you know, and when, when folks don't wanna see something developed. But from my standpoint, and, and being a professional real estate person, this is a great opportunity. You know, I think for the county to get some, some housing, and I think right now where we have a stagnant market now is where we need to add inventory because the pricing issue is gonna continue to get worse and worse. And if, if we allow for, um, you know, kind of a public clamor to deny future housing developments, that problem is going to continue to get worse. And so I just, you know, I respect everyone. I appreciate everyone that's here to speak to and I and the board. I know these are tough decisions, but we've made the best case we can, and we're ready to go. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
One thing I just have to know really quickly, um, public noticing was done. Uh, there were two signs posted well over ten days before the public hearing, and it was noticed on the county website, posted in the board and, um, on the state website.
Bob's not, I just wanted to go before, no, I, I, yeah, a couple, a couple of questions. One is, uh, when I looked at this survey map, I could understand that it said something like a subdivision. Um, but it also had things like vacant land and open land. Is there a difference between vacant and open land?
Yes. So one of the areas to the north has a PUD. One of the stipulations of a PUD is open space. Uh, and open space is how you, um, cluster development and then allow open space around it so that you can cluster your density.
Yep, okay.
And there's a couple of those surrounding operators.
And, and then it seems to me in the, in the proposal, just a couple of times, it looked like small lot residential, and then maybe it had a slash, uh, multifamily. It is small lot residential that they're going after.
Yes.
Because they are different, and they have different densities, yeah.
Yes.
Does that preclude OPLA?
Yes, in the current, in the current land use code. The current, yeah, the current land use code where, where, um, that the multifamily is allowed, this is area isn't in that map. So, um, in discussions with the applicant, their goals could be met by doing a PUD on the SLR with the density bonus for, um, affordable housing or attainable housing, and then leaving the open space surrounding, which they're trying to do with the trail going through. Um, so that was discussed with the applicant as a, a cleaner process and probably a more, um, a process that would be more likely to be accepted by the community and the conditions that they're probably looking at, what's changing.
And folks, I'm gonna try and get some, uh, before we begin with deliberations, I really wanna make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. So, um, if that, maybe I'll just, you know, keep it simple and start upfront here, and we can go clockwise and on the middle. Do you have any comments to be made?
Yeah.
And if you can, please, uh, have a seat and state your name for the record. I know, it's the rules.
No, it's perfect, because I have to go back to work, so. I was like, what if you were to find, just jump up and start from zero, I will go. Uh, so you need what from me?
Um, just your name.
Uh, Rachel Parker. I'm actually at forty-three eighty-one Chapman, which is right across the street from this development. And, um, I think that it's definitely interesting. It's interesting to hear the developers talk about it from the lens of what our community needs. And interesting to hear that on the back of our community housing needs kind of changing. So it's interesting to think of, is it necessary? Does it have to be that dense? Um, what happens to people who bought homes in a rural residential area, thinking that that's how it would be? What else will change in the future? Can we have roosters? Can we have goats? Can we, you know? When this is a complaint that says, now these are encroaching into the development's, uh, quality of life? So when do those complaints start to happen? Also, anyone who lives out there knows that, is anyone else's commute kind of changing a lot? It's getting longer, and obviously, these are not reasons to say like, absolutely no more people out here. Um, could there be an in-between where we don't have hundreds of additional dwellings, but there are some additional dwellings? Um, a concern of ours too is just also like biking on Spanish Valley. How does that traffic change? Is there going to be a route out there that's safe for people? How can we use our community to fit the needs of a rural residential community without having to like move out to the south? Um, so that is just something to keep in mind for us who bought there because we want the chicken and the clothesline and the backhoe and the whatever. Um, so that's why we live out in Spanish Valley. And I know that housing needs are important. Um, and so I don't wanna like, uh, say absolutely not. And I don't know what the needs are exactly, but there's another development going in on Spanish Valley. We know Royal Crossing is taking care of a lot of those needs. Um, so just kind of the, the guise of, you know, and I don't know these developers or these landowners, but at what point is the statement that says, oh, well, we're gonna bring affordable housing. And it's like, we just let every developer come in on that statement and kind of wind up doing whatever they want. So it would be great just for, um, I think the community that's there of ready to, like, we'd love to welcome more neighbors, um, but also maybe not like hundreds. And I think that's all, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, anybody next?
I don't know.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, please tell us your name.
And just one note, people don't have to give their addresses.
Yes, that's.
So I didn't want.
Save yourself some time. We don't need your address.
So I'm Alexis Morrissey. I'm actually here on behalf of Dr. Len Sorenson. Um, his, a lot of his concerns that he has are partially how people are going to perceive what is there already, the complaints that will come in. He has, uh, a small feedlot is one good way to say it, where he's got a bunch of cows. He takes his tractor out and moves manure, and it puts up a big smell into the area. There's the flies that come around. Um, there's the noises of the cattle, especially when you are separating them from their calves. He has for his business some floodlights out there for those late night calls, which people will find annoying. He also has his alfalfa field, which is the big field right next to this land property, and he has to water that. That water goes where it wants to go a part of the time because of the wind, so that spray can go over onto the other properties. He talks about the need of having one acre lots for people so that people can have horses, a place to have animals, where they're not going to get all the complaints, where they have enough room for the animals. Um, the traffic is one of his concerns because we'd be adding a lot more traffic. Uh, along with his business, we have a dog kennel right there, and once again, you get the noise. Um, there's also just on the other side in Zemwon County, the underdog kennel out there, so more noise. And he would like to have things kept more open. Um, another one of his big concerns is where is the drain water going to go? Because his field is the closest thing right there, and he's worried about that water coming. And flooding is filled, and he has the wash behind his house that just got through all the flooding, and he's worried about all that drainage coming through for him. And I think that's all.
Thank you so much. Um, anyway, who's next? Alana?
Uh, my name is Monarchis here. Um, I also live out there in the Spanish Valley. Um, so right there is Spanish Valley, and that's why a lot of us residents are out there is for more openness. Um, do we, do we need more housing here? A hundred percent. Um, are all of us that are mid-class tired of hearing it will be affordable? Absolutely. Um, it's never affordable. Um, the traffic out there is already on a dangerous level with how many bicyclists we have there. Um, nobody fights the speed limit, even though how much they've brought it down, I think it's actually made it worse. And my, myself as an animal owner, um, the complaints. I mean, they will say, they will say they're moving out there in the valley. That's what it is. That's what's around them. But you know what? The flies that my horses bring, smells, our roosters, my pigs, that's why we're out there. And I just, there will be complaints, and I just, I just don't like it. Okay, thank you.
Next. Who are you? Please, Alana.
My name's Marcy Till. Um, I live in Spanish Valley Drive. I'm further north from this development. And I sent you all an email. Um, I, I had a couple other things I didn't include in the email. Um, one of the things, uh, I was very interested to hear that, um, housing survey is being conducted. I'd like to know how that survey is gonna get into the hands of the most people possible because I believe the housing needs in our community have changed. And, um, I would love to think that, uh, that we are meeting the needs, the housing. I think the housing crisis is exaggerated, in my opinion. I think there are houses on the market now that have been there for a while. They're overpriced. They're not selling. Um, and so where is the demand coming from? Um, and are we able to meet it? Um, if we're not, if we're not creating actual low-income housing. I have a concern, I have a grave concern about flood control and water wanting to move off of 191. It wants to shoot downstream towards the little wash that flooded so violently last August. And I would invite any one of you to come to my property and see the eight to 12-inch debris that was left in front of my house that I'm not doing anything about. I've already hauled out tons of sand and brought in tons of gravel to make my driveway passable. But I think flood control and water is a big issue. I'm also concerned about two-story buildings in the valley. And I, I didn't know what layered, there was a term in the application that said layered something. It was, it was interesting, I thought. Does this mean two-story building? Does this mean layered building forms? I don't know what a layered building form is. Okay. So, um, you know, rezoning enabled housing mixed with small lots clustered in layered building forms. I understand small lots and clustered. I didn't know layered building forms. I will point out the development across the street from White's Ranch, which I think is completely inappropriate for Spanish Valley Drive with the two-story, I don't know if they're townhomes or, I don't know, I don't know. But I'm blown away by how they do not fit in with the tenure of the, the neighborhood. And finally, um, lighting. I'm very concerned about lighting. One of the things that we do have in Spanish Valley that I think is very important is dark skies. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, anybody else on this side of the room? We can go over there. Those, yeah, please, Alana.
Okay.
My name's Don Oblak. I live in Blue Vista subdivision, which is adjacent to the parcel in Sorensen's field. And we can see it from us, we're right on Zimmerman Lane. We're a connector to 191, which we already get several hundred cars a day of back and forth because of that being a connector. I really don't understand why we're trying to rezone a place when, and I didn't realize that comedy is looking at changing things, but we've got HDH 20, 25 rather, HDH 10 kind of planned out right along 191. So, talk about high density that could provide some of these more affordable homes. It's, it's already in the master plan. Now, is this changing? I'm not sure. But that's a quarter mile away from where we're talking about. The applicant talks, or the owner talks about whether this would be affordable, attainable housing. Is it deed restricted? Is there a low buy-in, price caps? What's the price range of these? You know, we don't know because this is very preliminary, just from this engineering firm. Multifamily residential, townhomes, condos, is that what we're talking about? Small lot, I understand, but so, we'll see. In our subdivision, we've got open space, 13 acres of open space that has a trail, almost a mile long, that runs out to this property. Is that trail gonna be connected as part of their trail system, which they discuss? Love to know. Since we're on that connector out to 191, are they gonna have a road access to 191 that's separate from Sunny Acres and Zimmerman Lane? I don't know that. We're anticipating four to 500 more cars. If we are talking 150 to 240 housing units and two cars per unit, normal. What's the plan on, on that coming through our subdivision? It's very narrow, 20-foot wide streets. To, to handle that additional traffic, it's just crazy. So, okay, thank you. And we don't know, are these one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? How tall are those? Are these buildings gonna be? We've got a 24-foot height limit, so we can maintain the views out to the La Sals and in our area. And I think it's definitely spot zoning because this is rural residential. Most of the lots or the property is one acre plus.
About you too.
Okay, alright.
I appreciate your comment.
Okay.
Um, who's next? Your face is in the back part of the room.
Hello. My name is Jamie Hulcy. I still not have my letter on file.
Okay.
So, I'm still in the last one here. Hulcy, H-U-L-C-B. So, I will echo what Monica said earlier. There is still somewhat of a need for housing to make it affordable. I don't see why it can't be affordable rural, rural living. There are people who still want to be comfortable and not packed in like sardines. The traffic will be a concern. It is a concern already with the right of accessway cutting through the Beaman property from Sunny Acres. People are flying down the existing road. Nobody wants the extra traffic, the extra noise. It is rural. There are people who have been out there, have been established for decades at this point in time. I learned to write out there when I was in second grade. Stay rural. A lot less people than are out there now. I would like to see it be considered for the people who already have been out there, who already have these established homes, houses and way of living. And I'd just like to hope that we are heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? Rich, you got one?
No.
Cool.
My name's Michael Quinn.
Michael Quinn, thank you.
So, I have concerns about dark skies too. And I believe this is Seale County.
Grand County.
So, hopefully those references will apply. Secondly, I have a science background, biology background. And there is a very healthy period of community in that area which will be massacred. So, I, I sort of hate to see the American way continue slaughtering wildlife. So, maybe it's a small concern to everybody, but it just goes on and on and on and it doesn't stop. Also, I, I fully agree that traffic is gonna be an enormous issue and the roads can't handle it. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Moving over to the front of the room.
Michelle Peterson, adjacent neighbor. Although I appreciate the developers scaling back, as he says, they did ask for multifamily residence, which got us excited at eight or five homes per acre. It scaled back to a small lot, thank you. But I think the appropriate scale back would have been in asking from one-acre development down to half acres, not five and eight, right? That's what got this room excited. A half acre would look something like Blue Vista, which is a lot of people in this room. Beautiful, well-established neighborhood that the roads that are developed there can handle that traffic. That neighborhood cannot handle the traffic that this neighborhood would bring onto them. The task force said it himself, we have a lot of housing coming online and we need to change what we are doing. So, I think any developer that comes to the Spanish Valley and says, we're doing this for the community, for the housing crisis, is, as somebody said in here, just riding the coattails of that because we already have plans and we have lots of housing coming online. And I'm very thankful for that, for our community that can't afford a larger piece of property. There is, some of the bulk points in my letter are preservation of rural character of life. My husband and I have a farm, a goat farm with chickens and goats. And we sell our eggs to Milk Stop and Eat, so we make a little money off of our eggs every week. The infrastructure limitations, the traffic and safety concerns are well off course. If we approve this one, what does that say for future developments in the area? You know, it's just a gateway. And then just the community sentiment and cohesion that we have with rural living out there now, we'd like to maintain and keep that. So, for the record, this is 36 letters of people that could not be at this hearing today because it's Monday at 4 o'clock that feel the same way that I do. That's all, thanks.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from that corner of the room? We have a comment? Anywhere, you're so rough.
That one.
You're a pervert.
Well, I've been on the stock driving down for 60 years. Right in the same spot. It's gone, nobody traveling on it to now. We just have car, car, because they opened the road.
Could you state your name for me?
Oh, this is dumb pants.
Oh, pants.
And it's just, if they do what they say they're gonna do, it's just gonna make it tough on us. The only thing of my concern was is that road that goes by our house is only 34. And where it's open to both ends. And the traffic is terrific. I mean, all the traffic that doesn't want to go down the lane comes through there to the main highway. And if they put this in, they're finding a road probably going through here somewhere. And it's just, it's just too much.
Thank you.
It's true.
Thank you. Um, given that there's nobody else in, yes, in the back part of the room.
All right. Lonnie Campbell. I live in the neighborhood right next door in Blue Vista. I'm actually like all for that field getting development, but I think, or development, I do think it needs to be like put into a more reasonable development, similar to what we live in. I don't even find even like quarter acre lots, because I understand there's gotta be some density there to make it pencil. But eight units per acre, that to me seems like it should be reserved for the city or highway commercials, somewhere in that realm. That completely goes away from all rural residential zoning, so that's, that's my thoughts. And then I think that, as everyone else has mentioned, the traffic's gonna be an issue. The traffic's already an issue. I don't think when our neighborhood got put in, they ever imagined it being the main thoroughfare for that whole end of the valley, so. And then the one last thing is, I'd be curious to know if they would be held to the same standards our neighborhood did with 20% open space. My thoughts.
Thank you, Lonnie. If there's no one else left in the room here on person, I can go over and we'll get to people online for folks online. You guys can hear me all right? Not if you can hear me. Super, thank you very much. To keep things orderly, I will call on you folks going from left to right from my point of view. The folks who are on Dick's iPhone, can you guys come off mute? And when you do, you'll have three minutes to make your comment. And please state your name for the record, that way. You're doing it for the same.
Hi. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. We can, thank you, please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Connie Pacheco.
I'm Mike Beer.
We live adjacent to the property on the south side of suggested developed area. We are very concerned about the development, of course. We moved out there for rural agriculture and we would love to see the quality of life stay that way. We're very concerned about the night skies as animal owners, you know, will we, you know, what about our animals? Would they still be accepted in such a development as this, even though we're outside of that? We're concerned about the flood control and the traffic control that would be a result of this many hogs going into that area. We're concerned about the infrastructure.
My understanding is that NOVAC is not interested in doing this unless it's a very high-density deal. And, you know, we've seen that down the road. It's an eyesore, it does not belong in this area. And I have talked to many of the people who live in that and they regret living in like sardines mixed right in next to each other. I don't think this is gonna benefit anybody but Brenda NOVAC.
Thank you, folks. If that's everything, I'm gonna move on.
We just, well, some final, some final comments, please. We understand about the development needed for housing. So, we also think that there is a design available, some way to incorporate both growth and progress and being able to keep the rural agriculturalness of the area, you know, so that people that are looking for horse property or open spaces would, would be able to achieve that and have their family grow up, you know, in a country where, in the county, where it's not so crammed in. I wonder if there would be open space as would there are with the other two subdivisions along either side of us. And we're just into.
Just your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
iPhone Marty, can you hear me okay? And would you be able to come off mute if, if you're able? So, in the bottom corner there, a little microphone. Click on that guy. Just to keep things moving along, I'm gonna say Kelly Miller, can you come off mute? And Marty, once you're off mute too, we'll just circle back to you. Kelly, are you ready? In the bottom left corner of the screen, there's a little microphone icon. You click on, on that.
Did that work?
Yeah.
Oh, great, great.
Thank you so much. You have three minutes.
Well, thank, um, this, I'm Kelly Miller. This is my husband, Reedrick Miller. And we live adjacent to the property at 4200 Moffett Lane. I did write a fairly long letter about all my concerns, the biggest of which is, you know, the Grand County has done a fantastic job of providing and protecting land rights for affordable housing and, you know, resort and, and this is rural. And it's always been rural and we want to see it stay rural. And we are encouraging them to keep it rural and for now and in the future. I don't think change is, is necessary because it's rural and it allows for housing. It allows for one home per acre. And, and the parcel is surrounded by folks that own and keep livestock. And horses have always come through that area. There's actually horse crossing signs on Spanish Valley Drive going over to Johnson's so you can access the Ken's Lake area. And with this type of development, it's only gonna create, the, the development that she's requesting is only gonna create a lot of conflict. We would like to see ranchettes. There's actually an incredible demand for horse property. So, I guess I don't understand why, and, and I would love to chat with her sometime, why she doesn't want to develop it as horse property and for folks that can maintain livestock. But I did address a lot of different things in the letter. I think according to criteria two, criteria four, criteria number eight and criteria nine and criteria 11 and criteria 10, this proposal just doesn't work. It's not holistic for the community, the area, or the existing residents.
Yeah, I concur with all that and reiterate what most other people have said, that, yeah, it's residential rural, let's keep it residential rural. We bought property there because, yeah, we like the environment of the neighborhood. And putting a high-density neighborhood in there will completely destroy that. And, and I haven't seen any studies, you know, on the water runoff, the groundwater, the traffic studies. It's like, I think it's pretty hard to make a decision when you don't have those facts and figures in front of you and the traffic will be horrendous. So, yeah, I definitely would like to see it continue as residential rural property. uh, in front of you and the traffic will be horrendous. So, yeah, I definitely would like to see it continue as residential rural property.
I appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. You've, you've reached your time. Um, Ms. Marty, are, are you there? Are you able to come off mute? There's a, if you scroll your mouse to the bottom left corner of the screen, you'll see a little microphone. If you click on that.
Still not hearing anything.
I'm very sorry, Marty. We're gonna give you one last chance. Um, look for that microphone icon in the bottom left corner of your screen. Um, Ms. Novak, I see you're online also. Would you mind uh, unmuting yourself and uh, and you have, you'll have three minutes when um, what's that happen? You're, you're also on mute, ma'am. You need to unmute yourself. You gotta click on the microphone. And cheer, just a note, if people wanted to on the, on the agenda information, there is a dial-in method. If people were having problems with technology to that extent.
Yeah. Thank you. There, there is on the meeting agenda. Oh, she's shocking.
I, I made it. I don't know why. I mean, it was working great. I had the hover button over it, but anyway, I don't want to waste my time doing that. This probably isn't the best way to meet all my new, new neighbors. Hello, everybody. Um, but I am having the same architect who is doing um, the, the, a really good design for the development, if it were to pass, um, do a home for me. So I will get to know you better, hopefully in the future. That's Brenda.
Super. And was that, um, did you have any other comment to make that was just a little short? I want to make sure you have three minutes, just like everybody else. Oh, two and a half.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just wanted to let everybody know that I love Moab, um, that I care about it as much as they do. Obviously, I'm planning to move there um, and build a house there. So um, I definitely share your concerns in many ways. Um, I think that we will be addressing the traffic studies, we'll be addressing the drainage, that, all that stuff, of course, will be handled um, correctly. And that's why we have professionals involved looking out for the best way to do it, continue the trails, um, all the good stuff, open space, so. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to say hello to everybody. I think that Curtis kind of handled our points early on and he'll probably have a summary. Do you have a summary or something you want to say, Curtis?
Yeah, he stepped on my.
He's gone. Okay. Anyway, um, hello to everybody and uh, we will do the best we can with this if it goes through to make everybody happy. Uh, I do want to address the density issue. And there is no way that a developer could develop at a higher, a less density. Um, the risk reward ratio just isn't there. You would, the chances are you would lose money. So that's not um, something I could do. It's not that I don't want to do it. It's that it's impossible, so. Um, that's not something that, that I can do and it's not, it makes it so out of reach for anybody to be able to afford that's local that it doesn't, it doesn't seem practical either.
Thank you. You have thirty, thirty seconds.
I'm good. I said my piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Novak. Uh, we also noticed Rachel P. jumped on. Um, Rachel, would you uh, mind coming off of mute? And uh, when you do, you'll have three minutes to make your comment.
Oh, it's fine. I was there earlier. I was the first one to go.
Thank you. You logged back in. I also noticed Ted Novak is on. He dialed in. Is uh, Mr. Novak, would you have a comment to make, sir? No? Well, um, we can circle back. Ms. Marty, are you able to figure that out? There's also an opportunity to dial in um, using the phone number listed on the meeting agenda. Well, um, I'll also point out that the public hearing is going to remain open and you can submit um, written comments um, post fact, if you choose to, to the Grand County Planning Department. Commission. Thank you. You can submit written comments post fact to the Grand County Commission if technical difficulties are getting in your way. You'll still be able to make a comment on the record um, by sending in a letter. Um, I do believe that was everybody online. So um, I guess we will conclude the public comment part of the hearing and a reminder that before we begin deliberations, we do need to have a motion on the floor. Um, so I would entertain a motion either to send a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. As, that thing is really long, so I'm just gonna say as written. And then we can start picking it apart while we deliberate. You have a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the ordinance to rezone thirty-two seven acres of property. Yes, uh, that's written and recommended.
A motion in the affirmative, if you could. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Tony.
A second. All right. So we're deliberating a motion in the affirmative that would be sending a favorable recommendation to the County Commission for the Novak rezon, rural residential, sprawl out residential. Um, oh, floor is open, guys. Let's get into it.
I've been discussing this a lot. Um, there are, if you go through the current general plan, I started out using a long line. Um, this general plan is only a guideline. And inside this general plan, it specifically states that we need to do a land use code update in order for all these things that we've worked on to go forward. A lot of the things that everyone's talking about um, would be addressed in that. And the general plan also has all sorts of other little things in it. We can go through and read it. And one of them that always hits me, which has been quite a bit throughout the years, is our census shows we haven't grown more than a thousand, well, twelve hundred people in twenty-five years. And our housing keeps growing. And unfortunately, when you get a rezone, or if you get a rezone, and you bring in this great plan and say, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna do this. Once you get that rezone and we don't require, or the planning commission and the council, planning office does not require, and you bring us in the site plan and say, this is what I'm gonna do and I'm going to do it for sure and I'm going to sign off my life for it. You could do whatever you want to do in the SLR town, once you get it. If you don't, once you get it, you get it. That's unfortunate because that just happened a couple of times this year. So I guess what I'm trying to say, I think we're going prematurely to a rezone. Because our land use code hasn't addressed the issues that the general plans brought up. And all through this general plan, you will read that that's what they're saying. The person that wrote it did all first. That's what general plans do. They're pie in the sky. They're not regular tools. Even the section where they charted out, just to be honest, I had to jump this episode. I don't know where it was. Um, the character of, I mean, the, the two sections of the zoning where they're trying to go from to the section to zoning. Um, there is, and in this, and in this regulation or in this plan, it specifically states that this, they have, that's the next step, is to go into enforcement. And the stuff that they're showing in here is stuff that we talked about and went through the process and I grant you, that's what we did. And everybody was there and all the people looked at it and we all said, oh, yeah, this is great. But it also says in this plan, we have these little centers and it says, that's where we need to start before we go out to the valley. And in all the years that we have done general plans, Spanish Valley South was always sacred. We always wanted to make sure that you could have your cows and you could have your horses. And Mr. Sorsen has been to many meetings and said, you can do what you want to on this property. I was here first and my cows are gonna make you crazy. And I totally agree with him that he should have said that because he was there first. So we kind of tried to keep that area sacred for that reason. And everyone here has brought up that saying, hey, goats, I think we have goats out there. Went to go see goats. Um, there's goats. And also in the general plan, if you read through, there are all sorts of fun facts in there. Um, part of it is twenty-five percent of the homes in Moab, in Grand County right now, are sacred homes. In a situation like this, I'm, because there's no guidelines. I mean, there's nothing here that says they can do anything they want to on this property. And also in their general plan, um, it refers to every now and again, it'll say, when it's talking about the growth of value, or bring out the HDHO. So it's opened up that envelope that we talked about, about the availability of opening that back up. Then we have guarantees that what it's going to be on the land will actually be there, healthy. I'm, I'm, I won't vote for this. I won't vote for this. And it's because for as many years as I have lived in this valley, in this county, this southern end of Spanish Valley was just for that reason. It was there for their horses and the cows and the and let's, because we're sprawling out. If we're gonna bring um, density in, let's bring it in, not out. Because then you're, and I'm just off the top of my head when they're talking about traffic, that's gonna be fifteen hundred trips a day. What's the way that goes out to a hundred fifty minutes? Because it's ten, the way you figure out trips is ten trips per day for household. Especially out there. Forgot, you know, you're gonna have to go back. Anyway. I, I want.
Thank you. Yeah, there we go.
So one of the things I don't understand with the whole, and this is a question for you, is when, like, has the road department, like, once the plans get in, that's when the roads get addressed, right?
Yeah. On that. So uh, a, a traffic study would be done based on whatever submitted at preliminary class stage. And then they would be required to develop to whatever standard that, that traffic study is, dictates. The site plan didn't show um, exactly how many houses they were planning. It just kind of gave an outline of what the neighborhood would look like. And it included in the packet because um, when you're looking at a rezone, it shouldn't, you know, be intended use. You need to look at the most of our intense use of the land and, and weigh it that way. And I didn't want to muddy the water with the site plan that may or may not go through. So um, that site plan is available on request. But yeah, so traffic study would be done, a drainage study would be done. All of those things would be done before preliminary plaque could get approved or final plaque could be approved. Additionally, we removed the MFR um, section because it would be um, developed as part of the PUD process. I don't remember if I said that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then with the PUD, that would incorporate open space, would incorporate the trails and, and be able to accommodate um, some of the concerns of the.
Those PUD have density bonuses.
The PUD has a density bonus um, for open land. You go, and it allows cluster development. So you could develop, you know, more densely with some townhomes or something as long as there's a, you know, open space around it.
And we already have a fifteen foot, the barrier around a development like this already goes up to fifteen feet, correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay, with, yeah, it's, it has to be with the PUD.
Yeah, with a PUD, yes. With uh, you know, with something like this, not necessarily. It would just be the standard of uh, what's, what's incorporated in the land use code currently for SLR.
Yeah.
I'm, I tend to look at this proposal as a few, it, it reminds me of a couple other rezones. It has traits that resemble other rezones we've seen come across um, our desk before. Um, and I'm really motivated to have the county's business not be stuck in what they call paralysis by planning. It seems like a lot of the time you can um, just say, we need another study. We don't have enough information. We need another study to, and, and then we freeze ourselves. Um, and we have made no progress. And we have crumbling water pipes and storm water that's backed up in roads that we can't, you know, fix without breaking everything. Um, but then again, this is one of those, you know, proposals that does seem to me like it's a little bit out of, out of order in that we've got this future land use map, future land use plan that we just spent a whole bunch of time on. You've got that part of the planning done. And, and listen, this is when I do, I do planning for like all day long. And then public meetings and every hat that I wear. And the way like this could, this works well is to understand that a plan is just a synthesized collection of a ton of public comments. It's just all the comments distilled down into a voice and made into a digestible narrative, right? That's what a, a good plan is. And then you take that public's voice in the form of a plan and you use that to change the laws, statutes, the ordinances, whatever level you're looking at. You take the plan, those are guidelines. That's the public's opinion in a document. And you're supposed to go and then update the code because we don't actually, we, we shouldn't be making decisions based on just what a plan says if it's not backed up by ordinance and statute. We have to fall back on the ordinance and statute, the letter of the law that the county commission votes in to the rulebook, not what our planning says, right? That's good government. And so when we look at, you know, an argument, and this isn't specifically for this development, but when I see, I'm talking like planning theory now, when I see an argument made that says, oh, well, this is in line with that plan you just did, you know, increasing density here or rezoning this thing there. It's in line with that plan you just finished. But we didn't actually get the consensus referendum from the county commission that backs up that plan in statute. I'd get really hesitant. And, and so I, I think like, doing this without the land use code update to back it up gives me pause. And that's probably the biggest reason why I, with, with Mary in this one, more likely to vote in the negative. I've got a couple other reasons, but I won't hobble all the time and I know all these reasons, so I'll turn it over to him.
I, I'm gonna say a couple of things. The, the very, very nice thing about the HDHO was that when somebody decided they were gonna build in high density, it could actually hurt neighborhoods. Eighty percent of those houses could be owned by actively employed households. There's, there's a guarantee. Um, I worried a, a bit about uh, giving a fairly high density five units per acre uh, to thirty acres and not actually knowing what that's going to look like. Somebody said, well, if it were a couple of acres, a couple of houses per acre, maybe that would be an okay, okay idea, which is a lot, a lot residential. I'd be more comfortable with that, but I always remember that as soon as we zone land for a certain density, people can do what they want to do. They can build just what they want to do, so I'm kind of nervous about supporting this increase in density in that kind of an area. I will probably vote now, probably.
Uh, I hear you, but I think having that future land use code is a process that we, I was there. A lot of us were there going through the future land use code, realizing what fit in. And I think it would be spot voting not to do this because the spot, it would be like saying, well, this property, we started getting into being like, well, here's that, here's not that, here's this. That future land use code was to give us cover to develop in a certain way, in a certain way. Now, I hear you about like, we don't have those sections filled out. Like, okay, the future land use, our, our future code might read different sections. But I'd also think about this. Those sections may allow for more density going in the future. And it's like taking this density at a small, or a, a, a small. And it's like taking this density and a small, a small S L R would be probably maybe less, less people than a, than a future thing that gets passed with an upstream with when we rewrite the code. The other thing I kind of concerns me is the, with the H D H O, we could control people. I hear you, Mary. Like, our population has not gone up. Why do we keep building houses? Is it because we live in dense houses already? Like, people are like, you know, four families in a house. My neighbors lived four generations in their house. And it's like having a housing stock to be able to expand out in that. I think, I have a feeling that that may be a part of the story. But we don't have an H D H O. The gentleman back there, it's a sunsetted thing. We do not have it. And it is, we have programs that, we have deed restrictions and it's hard to control occupancy with things. One of the things that I see with our community is having opportunities of a market. Like, there is a theory that if we build out, if we build it, you know, can you outbuild the market demand? And so there's, this was subscribed to the theory that's like, yes, if you build more housing, it'll drive down the price or at least keep it stable. So I like the fact that we do have housing that is not deed restricted for some people. I reckon we get a lot of second homes probably, but I have to follow the process of our, of our future land use map on this.
Mary, did you, did you say there was twenty-five percent second homes in the county?
Yes, according to the general plan, to help with the general plan of all that kind of stuff. And currently we've got twenty-five percent of second homes in the community.
And that was updated in twenty twenty, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. General ten twenty twenty, three twenty thirty.
Yeah.
So that's a five-year-old step.
I think it's still bringing some good perspective. I probably won't vote for this either because I think, I think the people have spoken. And I think we're here to serve the people. And I understand there's people that we're not hearing or seeing that might want to live in that area. But I also think that we should defer to, Mary has a lot of experience. And she was explaining that Spanish Valley is, Spanish Valley South is rural. So preserving that rural character, bringing density in and not out. That's another point, Mary, you made that I really like. And yeah, and then I also don't know at what point in the process do we get more information about the plat, that the developers, their plan? So they wouldn't submit any kind of preliminary plat. They, they have to submit it based off what zoning they're allowed. So with this, where they have, you know, at this point it's thirty acres and they're one to one. Okay, yes. So they would have to, you know, submit a plan or whatever they submit. So technically, you know, there is an option that they could do a P U D on this thirty acres, get a density bonus and, you know.
Okay. And, and sorry, I slapped on my homework. Is it eight units or five units?
It's five. The original was M F, had included M F R.
Okay.
And then we had discussed doing that density bonus with the P U D instead on the upper portion of the property.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you. Yeah. I also, I pedal Spanish Valley Drive Road a lot. And I, I, it's, it's not safe right now where it is. So that, I'm also thinking about that. So, yeah, I probably won't vote for this either.
Megan, I wanted to make sure you get a chance to lay in if you want.
Um, this is a tough one. The one thing that, that is on my mind, and it's because I started attending the Samhwan planning zoning meetings a couple of years ago when they started talking about their land use code rewrites, specifically Spanish Valley workshops. There's a lot of things happening just down the road from where this potentially is, including some zoning that is for high density. And I think that's something that is worth taking into consideration just for the fact that if this is, if we're really thinking about putting this many units here, just down the road, there's also another county who's thinking of putting in lots of units too. And if our population isn't increasing, theirs is decreasing an average of three percent from what they stated in their most recent workshop in Spanish Valley. I just think that those are some things that are, I'm all for building houses. We need to build houses. But if we're talking about high density, I think Mary kind of hit the nail on the head where let's bring that high density closer than this area. I'm a big fan of rural housing. I have chickens myself. Like, those, those things are important too. And then considering all of the input that, I mean, what do we do if, if we move forward with this and then complaints happen at the, for the vet clinic? That's not something we can police, but that's something that we really need to consider because that does play a pretty big role here. I mean, the vet clinic is big, underdog is big. You bring outside people in into this area, goat farm, chickens for milts, whatever it may be. Those people may not necessarily agree with their surroundings, but do we have an ordinance to speak to that? I'm with you on this one where if we don't have something to speak to it, are we putting the county in a vulnerable state to not be able to have some accountability in one way or another? There's, there's a lot to think about. You bring up good points. There's, it's just, it's a weird area. And there's a lot of really different things that we need to take into consideration for that, especially if it's a rezone.
And this is, you know, we, to, to get really specific about why I'm always on process stuff and why I say like the plan comes first and that's the synthesis. And then we take that planning and use it to update ordinance. To Megan's point is that a lot of the, I don't, we don't know what that's going to look like. We don't know what that's going to look like. We haven't seen what that's going to look like yet. When we update the ordinance, that was ordinances will answer a lot of those questions. Lot design standards setbacks, those kinds of things. That is what an updated and improved ordinance would give us. Moving forward with the rezone right now, we've just got to look at what small lot residential means and the letter of its law as it's written on the books. And honest to God, I don't like that. I don't like that ordinance as it's written right now. I don't like that section of the land use code. It needs to be updated. That's why we did the plan. We really, and, and we are recommending by, but the county commission cannot make legislative decisions based solely on planning. They need to be able to like point at the ordinance and, you know. I always ask myself this, how do I explain it to the judge? Right? How do I explain it to that administrative land use dude? And like, we're going to have to put up the ordinance and the ordinance did like, we have all the tools we need to update the land use code. We haven't done it yet. That's like to your point. You know, maybe we go back and get higher density after the land use code is done. That is too, like, that could happen. And that would be better for the developer and, you know, increase the housing stock. So I, I don't really see that if, like, I put myself in the shoes of my primary interest is the housing stock. I don't really see that risk as a, as a threat, that, that possibility as a threat, right? And they're like, okay, well, that's a win for us, right? So, um, hold on. Yeah, Derek.
I haven't had a chance to speak, Kevin. I'm sorry. I might be, I just said I might be the last one. Even though I did make the motion and I made it in the affirmative, just to be clear to the people that don't know the process, because you make a motion in the affirmative doesn't mean you're going to vote for it. To me, it makes it simpler. You're either voting in for it or against it. Although in this case I may vote for it. I wanted to go through my logic here, and that is we spent a lot of time working on this future land use map. It's, it's there on the county website for the whole world to see. And in fact, the applicant referred to the future land use map in the application. We spent a lot of time on that future land use map and multiple, multiple meetings. And I went to every one of those meetings that was a public game, every single one of them. And some of them did not draw as bigger crowd as we have right here tonight, honest to God. So where were these people when, when we were looking for feedback? The way that is, the way that process is marching right now is, as we talked about, the next step is land use code updates. And those land use code updates, those updates are going to talk about what exactly is a compact neighborhood and what exactly is a moderate scale neighborhood? We haven't defined those yet. That's what you referred to when you said we're out of step. I agree with you, we're out of step. We need to have that definition. But once we have that definition, guess what happens? The future land use map says this, they come in with a rezone request and now it's a conforming request and it should be a rubber stamp. And so that's something the people in this community need to understand is that these meetings are important. You need to voice your opinion. And if they're moving in ways you don't like, you need to speak up about it. So anyways, unfortunately, we are where we are with regards to that. We have all of land use code updates to go through. And I've got to say, if the people in this, this room are not comfortable with what that future land use map looks like, it may be time to take another look at it.
You mean us?
The future land use map.
Right, yes, thanks.
Well.
From a, from a, from a process standpoint, though, we marched down this path. We said we're going to do higher density and it's not that bad.
Well, and you also realize that the land use, or the general plan is from now until twenty thirty. So all that process that we do through that process, even through the map, we start at the beginning and make our way out. And one of the things, I said that you don't hear people complaining when, but there is a section in the general plan that we all did go through and spent time on. And it says, it's component three. This is an online community survey was conducted in July of twenty twenty-four and specifically asked, how would you define the Spanish Valley's character? And here's what we heard. Wide open spaces, agrarian, independent and independent, agriculture independent, charming and peaceful, home to weirdly mixed development, rural and funky, variety of uses and architectural styles. So they're not saying, it's not that they did say it. It just, it just what the map has done is said, okay, in twenty twenty-three, we're going to start building out. We're going to be here. And it's, and planning and, and notice of priority is you start with your density here and work your way out to here. It's not, you have to put it here. I don't know if you guys remember, but we know it was hated by everybody when we went in. And that zone happened in nineteen seventy or something. It was really a long time ago. And they couldn't build it because they didn't have water and sewer, of course. But, and, and on top of that, just so people realize too, because I know Kristi hit on this a little bit, that when you develop your land, a lot of the times you don't get the densities that you think you get. You have to buy roads and sewer.
Open space.
Well, not necessarily. There's only open space required for this one. And you have to have roads and drainages and, so a lot of times when you get all that in there, you're, so what you do? Build up. And I think one of the problems we're going to have if we don't get into our land use code is let's require a little bit of a single story. Let's not go through story out, too close out of the valley because open space, air and light, the things that people are out there for, we're going to lose it. And we're not, and we're not building any more land. And am I so boxing against, right?
If I could finish up with.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're just going to get bypassed.
I didn't interrupt you. Mary, I think you had some really good comments. And if, if nothing else, you're always accurate with what you say. And I think it's all those years of background in planning that make me, I have a lot of respect for.
I did most of the subjects out with that.
Anyway, that's my big point here is that map is, is there, it's on the website. We got a lot of public feedback in doing it. I agree with you completely, Tony, that it's out of step. But I think people need to pay attention to these things. And, you know, it's been frustrating for me with the lack of attendance as we've gone through that process. So until it's in your backyard, people don't seem to care. That's frustrating. That's very frustrating. Anyway, that's. I, I don't, I don't ask, ask, it's sort of a question of I, when, this is a legislative decision. So I think citizen input is actually important. They would even say you can listen to public clamor in a legislative decision. And I'd, I'd have to differ with you. I don't think that a rezone can really be quite a rubber stamp decision because it's a legislative decision. You have to listen to people and then kind of use some judgment. Of course, we only make recommendations, but yeah. So in any case, it follows the process. And, and the map, I agree with you, the map is important. And it was important to get public input into it too. Because it is a guide, kind of not a term.
And I just to go back onto my supremacy focused mind here. When we say that the plan is a guide, the plan is a guide specifically for updating the ordinance. Context in these kinds of decisions matters greatly. We should not be evaluating this rezone request based on planning. We should be evaluating this rezone request based on the letter of the land use code as it is written and currently promulgated, fancy word, by the county commission, as it's written right now. The plan is there to guide the land use code update. The plan is not here to guide our decisions in the room on a specific legislative item. Legislative means law, the ordinance as it is written, not the plan, which we haven't implemented yet. That's the way this has to work. Just remember that.
Law is partially influenced by court.
If we're not, we don't, we don't have that, what would they call it in the plan? We don't have the, those are not in effect. Those are not the law yet. A plan is not a law. So we're, we're talking about rural residential to small lot residential. And is that appropriate with the letter that we have right now? Sorry.
No, you're fine. I just want to point out one thing, though, really quickly to speak to that exactly. The future land use plan does speak to how rezones should be addressed. I would call your attention to page forty-four and forty-five. And I think that you all are aware of it, but I do think that that is an important aspect of this conversation.
Would you read that into the record for me? Because I don't actually know.
So there's a, it talks about how to address a rezone. When considering a proposed use or zoning designation, the following conditions must be addressed. The proposal must be consistent with the land use plan's overall vision and policy direction. This, and when I say that, I'm talking about this one, the future land use plan. The use or designation being considered must meet the planning principles outlined in the land use plan. The proposed use or designation should be included within the primary or secondary uses for the place type in the location on the map. All designated overlay zoning districts and associated land use or design requirements shall take precedence. There's, you know, some, you know, if the proposed use or designation does not specifically meet the primary or secondary uses defined, in this case, this area is called out as compact neighborhood, which is S L R and M F R. There's also, there is a section talking about translating zoning districts to place types within this general, or within this plan. And the translating existing zoning districts to place types does not allow for one for one approach. It's typically for a few zoning districts to merge into a single place type. The following graph depicts which existing zoning, you know, goes on. But just, you know, keep those things in mind because I do think that Um, but just, you know, keep those things in mind because I do think that this plan was adopted. And applicants under prior staff were directed to use this. So if we're, if we're changing, um. I mean, we can, we can do, it's a legislative decision. You guys are a recommending body, but this was, um. This is how this map has been shown to lots of applicants, not just specific to this one. So I think that you guys are going to be seeing a lot of these coming up. And I think that as we go through the land use code, this future land use map is going to guide what our zoning map looks like. So keep these things in mind as you're making this decision. You know, you guys are the recommending body, you do what you want, but this was addressed, it was voted on. And this is what applicants have been using and putting in their applications based on this. Uh, so.
Can I make a quick clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's an important point. I, I did, a couple of things. I keep hearing high density and. So what was your standard? Small lot residential is not considered high density in the scale land use. It's still considered, considered low density. The second thing is that I would say is we are stuck in paralysis by analysis and trying to get housing inventory. We've been in that for almost a decade now. Um, you're wasting people's ti- a lot of time and money by begging for housing, begging for housing stock. And what, you lay out a plan and say, this is what we want. And we're six figures in in engineering and time trying to create opportunity for more people to live in Moab. And then it gets ground down here because we get, you know, we get stuck in debating over, over policy. The lower density that you allow people to develop, the Spanish Valley, means you're gonna get resort homes for wealthy people on a half acre lots. That's what you're doing. Okay? You're not preserving agricultural. The demand is here. And so I just wanna clarify because I heard all of you around the table and say, high density, high density. You know, four to five units per acre is, is low density. And we have, um, through the, through the staff's recommendation scaled back to a PUD, which does guarantee that there's open space. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Chris.
Um, is there any further deliberation you wanna make around the table? Um, otherwise I'm inclined to ask for a vote on Jerry's motion in the affirmative. Process wise, remember we vote down a, a motion in the affirmative, we still have to hear a motion in the negative and affirmatively. Ascend a negative emotion. So we may be voting twice. Um, just how that works with Roberts. So anything else before I ask for a vote on that? Yep.
Can I just make?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I always like, you know, when the, the room is full and I understand people's like concerns with this. Um, you know, when I bought my first house, I had no clue about like what zoning was, what anything. It is not written in stone and it's moving. And I understand, you know, from a housing perspective, I'm a big, big housing advocate. And it's, it's like, you know, there's thirty people in the room and I also think about like the future hundred people that aren't here when I make my decisions as well. And so, you know, I, I, I get, I don't like seeing rural land. I grew up on a farm in Ohio and it's, you know, the cornfields are, uh, disappearing. It, it's kinda sad, but at the same time it's like, uh, you know, we have housing prices in the whole country. And broadening the stock is, is something that I, I, I kinda believe in. And you know, when we take about, the thing I see in this county all the time is like, oh, we have, we need housing, but not, not here. Not, not, over there is good. People over there are pointing over there. And it, it's kind of a problem that we all have to tackle as a, as a community together. Um, so that's kinda, I just wanna tell that to the.
Can I, I don't wanna like push, but like, so how, how is it enforceable that they're affordable? I read the applicant and it said affordable a lot in it. Just by making more units and increasing the stock, that makes it more affordable here as?
I guess there's an argument here that we just, if we build, will overcome a problem. There's, there's philosophies like, hey, D restriction, HDA, you know, these are philosophies. There's also a free, a complete free mar- free market philosophy. It's like, we just, uh, you know, we can outbuild the problem. And you know, there, as much as I don't agree with that one as much, it does have origins, so.
Well, and just from a like small watch scale standpoint, they can't pencil a development. Um, they couldn't develop anything. It'll remain vacant if they can't, um, if, if a developer, not this one specifically, generally. The developer can't make money off of the infrastructure improvements, they're not gonna develop.
Right.
So, yeah. So if you, you know, a lot of times density is the only way that would allow, um, someone to build anything. Because you know, if you put, at least the road is required, no matter whether you're putting a hundred houses or ten. And the road costs the same whether a hundred houses or a hundred or ten. So that's one of the reasons that, um, a lot of times people, a, a developer, when there's a large lot of, a lot of, a large parcel of land. Will ask for a bigger density because there's just not a lot of that. And that's not your problem. It's just, you know, one thing to, yeah, sorry.
Do you mind if I make one?
Um, the commission's perspective, you're an advisor here, yeah?
I don't know. I don't know if it's a commission's perspective, but I mean, there are a lot of studies out there that show that gateway communities don't conform to this idea of. We just build more and it will bring housing prices down because gateway communities are always gonna attract that second or third or fourth, how many homes people have. Markets where, you know, they wanna live next to canyon lands and arches. And so headwater economics does, has a really good study, just throwing that out if you may, if you're looking something like that, but.
Yeah, so just thirty thousand foot theory here. People's desire to live in Moab is the only inexhaustible resource in our housing market. It is the polar opposite of our water, followed by our hatred. We are constrained by water and space, not by the ability to bring people in here and sell houses.
Amen.
Jackson Hole, Wyoming, Sedona, Arizona, check it out.
I lived there. Sedona, yep.
Um, Park City, Utah. I've lived in Park City. I know what that's like. So when, um. You, I, I, I hesitate to apply conventional, like real estate housing market theory to like. Moab, Park City, Jackson, all in, all in places. Um, but in the interest of like, man, I love beaten dead horses and I know that's a scary thing to say in this room. But maybe we, maybe we can have a vote on Jerry's affirmative motion and see where we sit. And it'll be a referendum straw poll, basically. Um, so all in favor of sending an affirmative motion? For the reason, alright, Jerry and, uh, Aaron, sorry, but, um, Mary, you have that tally in your notes? Thank you. And then all opposed? It's like, I didn't mean to look right at you. Don't look. Um, the, the remainder.
That's your voters, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I am so torn on this because. I feel like. If we don't get this land use code or some ordinances updated. We are gonna keep pushing back people who are trying to do developments and it's not their problem. It's our problem. So there's a lot of things that we can't control. We've had a lot of things that have happened that are so unexpected. But we can't keep putting people on the back burner because we can't get this land use code done. And, and that's something, I mean. We've gotta figure it out. I know there's so much more involved in that, but in order for us to even continue moving forward as a planning commission and be successful in the things we want to do. We've gotta have some ordinances that we can hold these decisions to.
And I, I completely agree with you. And to that point, the land use code updates need to be a top priority.
Yeah.
I will send a signal to the county commission right now. Um, we absolutely must have appropriate staffing levels in the planning department in order to get this land use code process done. Folks are going to be continually up against this wall of Tony's a stick in the mud and he's too married to the process. The career bureaucrat just can't get out of his own way with the paperwork. Um, we need to get the land use code done and we can't do that. Chrissy can't do that. We need a fully staffed, and I know the county's working on that. I'm aware of what you guys are doing internally to address it, but we're like. Man, we gotta fill that department back in so that we can just get this done.
You can get contract, yes, person to write the code because we have the tax.
Yeah, the, 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 those conversations are ongoing. They're, they're working on it.
In this.
And I honestly, my vote is specifically based on the fact that we don't have these things in place. So I don't feel that I can make a decision based on the rezone itself.
Yep.
Because of the lack of ordinances. If we don't have that supporting documentation.
That's right.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting my name on something that we can't hold ourselves accountable to.
Yep.
So just to keep things moving along, um, recommendation in the affirmative was voted down, um, plus that five two. Um, I would then, the only other option is to hear a recommendation in the negative, that is to send an unfavorable recommendation to the county commission. Or next motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second it by Mary. Long motion.
Based on what? I was like, you want me to say?
Based on, based on the findings as written.
Based on the findings as written, yes.
Gotcha.
I was scared you were gonna.
No, got it. Um, that's stupid. So motion by long second by Hopine. Um, do we need more deliberation on that or should we just trade?
I gotta go to the softball game.
I appreciate you.
Laura, if I were to make a recommendation, I'd say that you should, you could base that on the fact that we've not yet defined land use code appropriate for the, the future.
Okay, yeah, yep. I, I based that on, we have not, uh, finalized the land use code yet, deliberations yet. I'm still here.
Tony, do you want us to go ahead and, uh, our, the previous discussion? Kind of, because if it, if it doesn't, then we should probably give other reasons.
So the, yeah, motion is on the floor. Additional deliberation is, you know, encouraged. We've got the reasoning of findings here, uh, inadequate in the light of the land use, lack of land use code updates. If we would like to, you know, spin on that a little bit more and have further deliberation.
I just, I just wanna say that I mean, I think it is important where this density occurs. This is pretty far out. It's in an area that's fairly rural. It's, uh, uh, a reasonably high density in terms of kind of how, uh, uh, family housing. Small life, small lot residential, multifamily is a kind of different thing and so is highway commercial. So I think it's actually a, a fairly high density for the area.
Um, I wanted to bring up too, Chrissy brought up the page forty-five, the board of the land use, or the general plan of how that's, how we rezone. She didn't bring up the last part of it, which was that the community made it clear during the scenario planning that it wants to move differently. The focus on growing inward. This new growth framework requires several key components working together. And then once again, it brings up, start with the key places that we've got on the map and then work your way out. So I, I encourage everybody to really get into your, into this general plan. It's interesting.
I guess this isn't a deliberation, but I think it's really cool that you all came here to speak your mind. And I just, yeah, I think it's really cool when people come and, you know, maybe you didn't see the map that we made, but, um. I appreciate the comments that were, that were made, so, yeah.
The second, that this is probably the, one of the top three most asked public hearings I've seen here in four years, at least. Yeah, it's really turned out on this one.
And I'll say, I hear, I, I hear it a lot. People say it doesn't matter if I kept to those meetings. It does matter. And it matters at a county tuition level. It matters a lot. When people come in person, it hasn't, it packs a big punch. I'll tell you that.
Pickleballers.
The pickleballers.
And so everyone in the world knows, uh, your names and your comments have been recorded and will be incorporated into the staff report for the convention. So yes, come to the next one if you would like, but don't think that it's, that it's won and done and lost here. We will, your voices will continue to be heard, yeah, please clarify, guys.
Um, in that case, thank you, Chris. Um, in that case, I think we can have a vote on the motion in the negative to send an unfavorable recommendation. All in favor of the unfavorable recommendation? That's, uh, the same split, all opposed to the unfavorable recommendation. Very good. So that's the same split as the last vote in the opposite direction. Well, in that case, the most impasses to send an unfavorable recommendation as written in the agenda packet for June twenty-third. Um, Chrissy, for folks in the room, just so they know, this will be in front of the county commission at, at which one do you think? Do we know? I don't even know yet.
July fifteenth.
This will be heard in front of the county commission to make a final decision on July, as it is today. Um, cool. Moving on, back to the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, general business action items discussion. We have no further action items I see on the agenda. Chrissy, am I missing anything? Oh, more, more letters. I'm gonna, Chrissy, I'll get you these afterwards. Um, and I don't believe we have any discussion items. Um, I'll just reiterate into the records for our memory, um, for future considerations. Aaron, will you shoot the mail to Chrissy about that July thirtieth?
Yep.
Meeting. Um, that way, um, we can avoid the Oma issues if you go straight to Chrissy and she can communicate that to us. That's the cleanest. I missed anything?
You're doing great.
Cool. Well, in that case, I'd entertain a motion to.
Move it, Jerry.
We started seconding, all in favor? No, I'm gonna keep you guys.
I got a softball game too.